Welcome to the Bartlett Planning Commission, November 3rd, 2025. We're gonna rise up, we're gonna have Jackie on, give us our open prayer, and then we'll say a pledge of allegiance.
Pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day, thank you for this beautiful weather we have. God, I pray that you grant us wisdom tonight as we do the city's business. Watch over and protect all of those in this city, Lord. And as always, I pray that you protect those who place themselves in harm's way for our benefit, and I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Trust, everybody's had a chance to read the minutes. If so, entertain a motion.
Make a motion. Make a motion, we approve. I'll second it.
Greg Easton?
Yes.
David Hunt?
Yes.
Jim Lamb?
Yes.
Ken Demetrio?
Yes.
Jack Young?
Yes.
James Reed?
Yes.
Don Conway?
Yes.
Paul Kaiser?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to new business. We have a rezoning request from Sam Guffin Properties. Director Kim will come forward and introduce that to us. So it's also gonna be a public hearing.
Tim D'Agostino with WH Porter Consultants on behalf of the property owners is requesting Planning Commission approval of a favorable recommendation to rezone to the BMA, to rezone 21.85 acres of land from RS-18 to RS-15 residential single-family zoning districts. The property is located on the north side of Old Brownsville Road, just west of the intersection of Ellendale Road at Old Brownsville Road. The applicant is seeking to rezone the property, and it will match the sizes of the adjacent lot sizes for the King's Crossing Plan Development, the Stonecrest Plan Development, and the Wellsgate subdivision. The property is encumbered by a non-buildable stream buffer near Old Brownsville Road frontage, so the applicant is proposing to rezone the property in order to increase the number of units per acre that is permitted by the RS-18, which is normally two lots per acre, and that would increase to 2.5 lots per acre with the rezoning. And this is again because a third of the property is not buildable due to the stream. This rezoning proposal would allow building single-family residential lots that are comparable to the surrounding area of lots and homes. Staff has reviewed this application and recommend approval with the conditions as stated in your report. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Taylor. Any questions for Director Taylor?
Did we ever get any more information besides one piece of paper?
Besides one piece of paper?
Well, it says in here that it was submitted on one sheet of paper. For this review, the only submittal received was a single sheet showing potential roads and a lot layout.
I'll defer to-
Under engineering conditions?
Yeah, the applicant must obtain a master construction and final plan approvals. Sam?
So that's an engineering condition, and essentially with the rezoning, they just need to show a conceptual site plan of if we've rezoned this, what is this potential subdivision or site plan gonna look like? And so what's attached is essentially the conceptual subdivision, what they will be providing with future master plan construction and final plan submittals to the Planning Commission.
That's normal for the planning side of it.
So you guys are happy with that?
It's a conceptual plan for planning, so if engineering needs more, then...
I mean, this is for zoning, so it's not an engineering issue for us. We do have a lot of engineering conditions. Obviously, for the future, where we would, when, if this were to pass and come back for final plan and construction plans, then we would expect to have the remainder of these questions answered. But for rezoning, it's not really an engineering issue.
Any questions, Director Taylor? Seen none, thank you, Director Taylor. Is the applicant here? If you just state your name and address for record, if you're, I guess there's really no conditions for this, but...
How you doing? Henry Porter with WH Porter, 6055 Promise Park Way, Memphis, Tennessee. So we haven't done any engineering on this. We've still got some questions that we have to answer if this proceeded. I think we want to get this, there's a dish that goes through that we want to get assessed, see if it's even a stream or not, if it's a wetland, whatever it is, and that's gonna kind of dictate what we're gonna do in the future. But if this didn't pass, then we don't want to spend the money on doing the site assessments yet.
Thank you. Anything else you'd like to add to that?
Unless you all have any more questions for me.
Any other questions from the commission, while the applicant's here? Seen none, thank you. Any discussion among the commissioners?
It's a public hearing.
I'm sorry. Jack made a good point. So we do have, this is a public hearing, so we start out for and against. Each person coming forward, we have three minutes to make their case, sort of like a letter, you state your case, and after that, you have a total of 20 minutes, and then we go to for and against. So anyway, if anybody wants to speak for the application, please come forward. Anybody for? Seen none, anybody against the application? Okay, we got one coming up. And if you'll just please state your name and address for record when you get to the
Good evening. My name is Beverly Harbin. I live at 6559 Royal Valley Cove, which is impacted by this proposed new subdivision. I, along with several of my neighbors in King's Crossing subdivision, have met and we have talked about numerous concerns that we have regarding the proposed new subdivision. One of our biggest concerns was the reason for the change, and I've heard some tonight. We just don't want properties that are less square footage than we have. We've just seen in the subdivision behind us that was added in a few years ago, Stonecrest, some of the houses are smaller houses, and so we notice every six months to a year, new property, new owners moving in and out, and that disturbs us. So we are concerned about what is gonna be put in our community. We do not want Running Bird, that's a street in our community, to be open. There's some things that we don't want, that we just wanted to make upfront, some things we who have lived here for over 20 years, we want to make you aware of. We do not want Running Bird to be open up as a through streets, there are several other possible streets. We're also very concerned about drainage issues. We want those to definitely be thought about as you look at adding this subdivision. We've already, my husband and myself, just recently, had to have sand put on our property to correct water drainage issues, and about four years ago, we spent over $40,000 with OSHAM to treat water damage issues. So who guarantees there's no damage, no drainage issues, and who's gonna pay for the damages? Because we have done that already in our community. We say here in Bartlett that we are a tree city. That's what we say. We want a deep tree line on the back of our property between this new subdivision. We love our trees. We love how we can set out in our backyards, in our sidewalks, and we can see the beautiful trees, and we don't want all our trees to come down. Ground issues, when construction happens, and as I say, we experienced this a few years ago in Stonecrest, our per fence was knocked down, and as they tried to scrape all the trees from the background area. We had fowl mice and other creatures that invaded our homes. We were forced to spend money to rid our community of those invaders. So will this company accept the bill to protect our homes from the invasions that they're gonna cause when they do groundwork? We just had a major tax increase in new fees with this new administration, and so we, our roads have not been improved. So we're just concerned about new people coming in, disturbing our community, and not thinking about the us who live there now. That's all we have to say. We just want to give you a heads up that we're watching, and we are concerned, and we do vote.
Thank you for your comments. And anybody else want to come forward to speak? Against?
Well, it's really more of a, it's not a question-answer kind of thing, it's if you want to make a three-minute statement, you can. It's not really a question-and-answer forum for that. You're always welcome to answer, you're always welcome to talk to your alderman, or any of us, maybe we'll speak to you after the thing, and of course, Director Taylor's always available too, to take comments or questions, too. Did you want to come forward to speak against? Okay, yes, sir, please come forward. State your name and address for record.
My name is Jason Warren, live at 6470 King's Cove, right above where this new subdivision is being proposed to be built. We have a steep hill on there, top of there, so if they're planning to come in and you approve this, where is all this, when you step up there, it's a bunch of drainage coming around there. Where is all this drainage gonna go versus coming down the hill to our property line, where we'll have problems with things? And I just would like for somebody to be independent, just to take a look at that really well before we make a decision on that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your comments.
I'm sorry, sir. Sir, you were King's Cove, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. That's all I needed to know.
It's on King's Forest.
King's Forest, okay.
It's on King's Forest.
All right, thanks, sir.
And we're still in a public hearing, so any other body want to come forward speaking against the application? Anybody against? Seen none, that closes the public hearing. We'll give the opportunity for anybody with the planning department, or anybody, the applicant might want to speak to address any of those concerns before we... And also, would entertain any questions from the commission for the applicant and the staff? Thank you, sir.
I was gonna say, you know, we're all aware of the sensitivity of drainage in this area. You know, we have noticed, especially in Royal Cove, that there potentially could be some drainage issues over there, based on how that water flows. We would be putting a detention basin up there to slow down the water before it goes out, but based on, as she's saying, you know, we'd probably just go a little bit above and beyond, just to make sure that you're reducing a little more than we have to. With regards to the drainage on the southeast, I mean, we would do detention as normal, but we would look at the contours around the property, just make sure that we're not adversely affecting anybody, because we recognize that it comes back on us if we do it wrong.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you'd like to add? Any other questions for the commission?
Any comments about the tree issue that was just brought up?
I'm not sure how we, with regards to the animals leaving, you know, I don't-
The trees?
The trees. We would maintain a buffer up at the front, but we don't have, we don't have a design yet, so we're gonna have to see just how we would actually apply that in the future. But I think we could probably, I think we could accommodate at least having a buffer on that north side, you know, with a concern for her.
Thank you.
Any questions from commissioners? Seen none, we've got an open discussion among the commissioners?
This is just to change, I'm sorry. This is just to change it from an RS-18 to an RS-15, is that correct, Ms. Kim?
That is correct. The lot sizes will go from a minimum of 18,000 square feet to 15,000 square feet.
How much?
Minimum of 15,000.
Fifteen, okay.
And that's consistent with the lots around it now? Is that correct?
Yes, with the other plan developments around it.
Any other discussion among the commissioners?
I think this was brought up before, I think I asked the question, the price of these houses are gonna be in what range? 350, 400,000, give or take?
I don't know either.
Too early?
There's no, sir, there's no, there's no further discussion, we entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Can you give something?
I'd just like to make one comment. So to the north is RS-18, to the south is RS-15.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
I'd make a motion that we move this forward with a positive approval, positive recommendation.
Got a first?
Second.
I got a first and a second? You'll call a roll?
Greg Easton?
Yes.
David Hunt?
Yes.
Jim Lamb?
Yes.
Ken Demetrio?
Yes.
Jack Young?
Yes.
James Reed?
Yes.
Don Conway?
Yes.
Paul Kaiser?
Yes.
It's been approved, thank you. Moving forward, we have a construction plan for a Bartlett Boulevard to Yale Road Plan Development. Director Kim, if you'll come forward and introduce that to us.
David Bray with the Bray Firm on behalf of the property owners is requesting Planning Commission approval of construction plans for the Bartlett Boulevard and Yale Road Plan Development, a five-lot residential plan development subdivision on 3.66 acres of land. The property is located at the southeast corner of Yale Road and Bartlett Boulevard, and it is located within the RS-10 single-family residential zoning district. On July 7, 2025, the Planning Commission made a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman for the five-lot planned residential subdivision. On August 26, 2025, the Board of Mayor and Alderman approved the plan development. This construction plan approval request includes erosion control plans, sanitary sewer plans, grading and drainage plans, street plans for the alley. Full access to the subdivision will be from Yale Road and limited access, which is right-in, right-out only on Bartlett Boulevard. There is also a conjunctive request for final plan approval on your agenda tonight for this same subdivision. Moving forward, staff has reviewed this application and recommend approval with the conditions as listed in your report.
Thank you, Director Taylor. Any questions for Director Taylor about this construction plan at Bartlett Boulevard to Yale Road? Seen none, thank you, Director Taylor. Is the applicant here? Just state your name and address for record, please, and do you agree with the conditions of staff?
David Bray with the Bray Firm, 2950 Stage Pleasant North. And yes, we're in agreement with the conditions of staff, and I just saw the staff report this morning. We will, we will shift the drive over to line up with that other street and eliminate the need to make that a right-in, right-out, as one of the conditions stated.
Okay. Any questions from the commission, the applicant?
I have, who's gonna maintain that alley? Is that the city that's gonna maintain that alley? Is that an HOA?
No, it'll be an HOA.
Any other questions for Director Taylor or the applicant? Thank you. Any discussion or any other questions?
There's no other discussion, I move we approve with the recommendations from staff.
Second.
First and a second, you'll call a roll?
Greg Easton?
Yes.
David Hunt?
Yes.
Jim Lamb?
Yes.
Ken Demetrio?
Yes.
Jack Young?
Yes.
James Reed?
Yes.
Don Conway?
Yes.
Paul Kaiser?
Yes.
It's been approved, thank you. We're going to move number three, item three. He's here? I was gonna move it, anyway, that's okay. All right, thank you. Number three, Ellendale Methodist Church, if you'll introduce that for us, Director Kim, Taylor.
Wesley Woolridge with the Renaissance Group on behalf of the Ellendale United Methodist Church is requesting construction plan approval for the church property, which is 5.71 acres of land, where they are proposing to do a three-lot subdivision. The property is located at 7229 Centralia Road, and it is located within the RS-12 single-family residential zoning district. The construction plans include a proposed plat, site grading and drainage, with a dedicated stormwater detention area, and it has existing sewer and water service plans. Access to this property will be from the existing Ethel Avenue, Centralia Road, Fanta Street. With that being said, staff recommends approval with the conditions as listed in the staff report.
Thank you, Director Taylor. Any questions for Director Taylor regarding this construction plan for Ellendale Methodist Seen none, thank you, Director Taylor. Is the applicant here? If you'll please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
I am Wesley Woolridge with the Renaissance Group, 9700 Village Circle in Leipman, Tennessee. I'm here for any questions, if the board has it.
And you do, do you agree with the conditions of staff?
Yes, we agree with the conditions, we're in agreement.
Thank you. Any questions to the commission? Seen none, thank you. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the commission, discussion? Still entertain any questions, comments, or motions, if you'd like to-
No questions, I move we approve with the recommendations from staff.
Okay, got a first?
I'll second it.
Got a first and a second?
Greg Easton?
Yes.
David Hunt?
Yes.
Jim Lamb?
Yes.
Ken Demetrio?
Yes.
Jack Young?
Yes.
James Reed?
Yes.
Don Conway?
Yes.
Paul Kaiser?
Yes.
Thank you, it's been approved. Moving on, we go to the final plan. Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Okay, moving on, we have a final plan, re-subdivision of Lot 23. If you'll introduce that, Director Taylor.
Jake Kaufman with Allen &amp; Hoshell on behalf of the property owner is requesting approval of a final plan to re-subdivide Lot 27 of the JD and JA Kearney subdivision. The property is located at 2541 June Way Drive, and it is located within the RE residential estate zoning district. This is just a bit of a background, this is a much older subdivision as it is today, and it is, it was originally recorded in 1948. The request by the applicant is to subdivide Lot 27 into a two-lot subdivision. It is currently 2.59 acres in size, and the lots will be relabeled as Lot 27-1, and it will be 1.59 acres, and the other will be Lot 27-2, which will be one acre in size. There is an existing house on the property, which will remain on Lot 27-1, and the applicant proposes to build a new home on Lot 27-2. The lot sizes will be changed as the applicant will divide the property into two lots, with Lot 1 being 1.59 acres, and Lot, I'm gonna say Lot 27-1 being 1.59 acres, and Lot, Lot 27-1 being one acre. With that being said, access will be from June Way Cove for Lot 27-2, and there will be an existing curb cut on Alteria Road for Lot 27-1. With all that being said, staff has reviewed this application and the plans, and recommend approval with the conditions as listed in the staff report.
Thank you, Director Taylor. Any questions for Director Taylor? Director, any questions? Seen none, thank you, Director Taylor. Is the applicant here? Please come forward, state your name and address for record. I think you should know how to do that by now.
A little practice. Good evening. Jake Kaufman with Allen &amp; Hoshell, 1661 International Drive, Memphis, Tennessee, 38120.
Thank you very much. Have you read the conditions, you agree with those?
Have had an opportunity to review the comments and conditions from staff, both engineering and planning, and are in agreement.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the commission? Any questions? Seen none, thank you. Any discussion? Any questions from the commission? Seen none, entertain a motion?
I move we approve with the recommendations from staff.
Got a first? Got a first and a second? If you call a roll, please.
Greg Easton?
Yes.
David Hunt?
Yes.
Jim Lamb?
Yes.
Ken Demetrio?
Yes.
Jack Young?
Yes.
James Reed?
Yes.
Don Conway?
Yes.
Paul Kaiser?
Yes.
Been approved? Okay, moving on, we have the Danielle Mary subdivision on Apppling. Your Director Taylor, if you'll introduce that to us, please.
David Bray with the Bray Firm is requesting Planning Commission approval of a revised final plan for the Apppling Pleasant subdivision, which will be renamed with this approval to the Danielle Mary subdivision. The property is 1.227 acres, and the applicant will subdivide this into two lots. The property is located at 7553 Memphis Arlington Road, and it is within the RS-12 single-family residential zoning district. The Planning Commission approved a final lot, a final plan for a two-lot subdivision in May, on May 3rd of 2021. However, the applicant could, at the time, decided that they did not want to install the stormwater detention for Lot 1 of the new subdivision, so the applicant rerecorded the plat and joined the lots and created just one lot. So now at this time, the new owners are wanting to subdivide it to create two lots, with one lot being 16,968 square feet, and Lot 2 being 36,514 feet. Lot 1 has an existing home on it that currently does not meet the zoning requirements for setbacks. However, if the home is ever destroyed, it will need to be brought to the current ordinance regulations for setbacks and lot coverage. Lot 1 will have driveway access to Memphis Arlington Road and Apppling Road, and Lot 2 will have access from Apppling Road only. Also, Lot 1 has existing water and sewer service, services, so Lot 2 will need services as well. Staff has reviewed this application and recommend approval with conditions as listed in this in this staff report.
Thank you, Director Taylor. Any questions for Director Taylor? Seeing none, thank you, Director Taylor. Is the applicant here? Please state your name and address for the record.
David Bray with the Bray Firm, 2950 Stage Plaza North.
Agree with the conditions of staff?
Yes, we're in agreement.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
I got a question for Dave, or it might be for the other one. The retention, the sewer issue has been taken care of now, or are they going to put a retention basin in there or what? Is that it there on the thing? Okay.
The stormwater, yes, yes.
Oh, stormwater, I'm sorry.
Yes, okay, I thought we were going back to the sewer issue, only this one's not in that basin.
So it's the circle on there, okay.
Yes, sir.
I thought so, but I want to make sure.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, any other questions?
Has anybody talked to the neighbor on the, I guess, south side about the retention pond being there?
Sure.
Sure.
Hello, everybody. My name's Daniel Lee, we live at the property. I've spoken to the neighbor and just told him there's a pond going to be there because currently water flows, when it rains really hard, it just flows across his driveway, so this would solve that problem. It's going to be something that looks nice, it's not going to look bad.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Not entertain a discussion or a motion?
I move we approve with the recommendations from staff.
Second.
I got a first and a second, if you'll call a roll, please.
Greg Easton.
Yes.
David Hunt.
Yes.
Jim Lamb.
Yes.
Ken Demetrio.
Yes.
Jack Young.
Yes.
James Reed.
Yes.
Don Conway.
Yes.
Paul Kaiser.
Yes. Thank you very much, it's been approved. Moving on, we have a Bartlett Boulevard, Yale Road planned development. Just final plan, if you'll introduce that for us, Director Kim.
Yes, again, this is a conjunctive request that you heard earlier for, it goes along with the construction plan approval that you guys just did. Again, David Bray with the Bray Firm is requesting Planning Commission approval of a final plan for the Bartlett Boulevard and Yale Road planned development. This is a five-lot subdivision on 3.66 acres of land, and it is located within the RS-10 Residential Single Family Zoning District. The density units required for the RS-10 is usually 3.5 density units per acre. This one is only one, this one is only 1.36 units per acre. The lot sizes in this subdivision will range from 13,816 square feet to 58,800 square feet or 1.34 acres. The planned development will feature a 49,161 square foot common open space, guest parking areas, and a mailbox cluster area. Full access to the subdivision will be from Yale Road, and limited access will be from Bartlett Boulevard. With that being said, staff has reviewed this, this application and plans and recommend approval with conditions as listed in your report. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Taylor. Any questions from the commission? Any other questions? Seeing none, entertain discussion? I'm sorry, we're getting to get to the applicant. If you have applicant, if you'll come forward, state your name and address for the record, and are you agreeing with the conditions of staff?
David Bray with the Bray Firm, 2950 Stage Plaza North, still in agreement with the conditions, and we're still going to move the street over.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission for the staff or the applicant? Seeing none, thank you, sir.
There's no questions or comments, I move we approve with the recommendation from staff.
Got a first?
Second.
Got a first and a second, if you'll call a roll, please.
Greg Easton.
Yes.
David Hunt.
Yes.
Jim Lamb.
Yes.
Ken Demetrio.
Yes.
Jack Young.
Yes.
James Reed.
Yes.
Don Conway.
Yes.
Paul Kaiser.
Yes. Thank you, it's passed. Moving on to the last item tonight, well, actually, one more after this. So moving on to number seven, though, Ellendale Methodist Church subdivision. Director Taylor, if you'll come forward and introduce that.
Again, this is another conjunctive request where you all just approve the construction plans. Mr. Wesley Woolridge with the Renaissance Group on behalf of the Ellendale United Methodist Church is requesting final plan approval to subdivide 5.71 acres into three lots. The lot sizes will range from 12,000 square feet to 5.10 acres, and the reason for doing this is so that the app, so that the church can sell one of the properties which has a house on it. Access to the subdivision is from Ethel Avenue, Centralia Road, and Fonta Avenue. Staff has reviewed this request and recommend approval with conditions as listed in your staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Taylor. Any questions for Director Taylor? Questions? Seeing none, thank you, Director Taylor. Is the applicant here? If you'll come forward, state your name and address for the record, and?
Wesley Woolridge with the Renaissance Group, 9700 Village Circle.
Thank you, sir. And are you agreeing with the conditions of staff?
We are, yes.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Chair, entertain a discussion or a motion?
There's no discussion, I move we approve with the recommendations from staff.
I'll second it.
Got a first and a second? Thank you. Got a first and a second, if you'll call a roll, please, thank you.
Greg Easton.
Yes.
David Hunt.
Yes.
Jim Lamb.
Yes.
Ken Demetrio.
Yes.
Jack Young.
Yes.
James Reed.
Yes.
Don Conway.
Yes.
Paul Kaiser.
Yes. Been approved, thank you. Okay, moving on to the Chapman Automotive Repair Edition, 5694 Stage Road. Director Taylor, if you'll come forward and introduce that for us.
David Bray with the Bray Firm is requesting Planning Commission approval of a revised site plan for Chapman's Automotive Repair. The property is located at 5694 Stage Road, and it is within the CGMS, that's Commercial General with the Main Street Overlay Zoning District. Just to mention, this is a part of the original town of Bartlett Platt, and it was developed as a gas station in the mid-1960s. On April 19, 2011, the Design Review Commission approved a site plan for a fence addition for storage behind the original building. Tonight's request is for a revised site plan to add a 2,130 square foot building with three bays and roll-up doors. To accommodate this expansion, the existing parking spaces will be removed and relocated to an adjacent lot behind the building. The existing dumpster enclosure will also be removed and relocated to the east of the existing building. Staff has reviewed this application and recommend approval with the conditions as listed in your staff report. There is also a site data table listed in your report with additional information. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Taylor.
I've got a question. It says required parking space is 205.
It does.
I think we missed that one.
I believe that's a typo.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was wondering about that.
So is it probably 25 maybe?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Guess the main thing we understand is it does meet guidelines?
Excuse me?
It does meet the guidelines for proposed parking?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Their parking is going to be an adjacent lot, but you can do that in a commercial zoning district as long as it's within 300 feet of the business.
Great, thank you. Any questions from commission? I'm sorry, that's, that's fine. I think we're done, thank you, Director Taylor, sorry about that. Is the applicant here? And once again, if you'll please state your name and address for the record?
David Bray with the Bray Firm, still at 2950 Stage Plaza North. And yes, we're in agreement with the conditions.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the commissioners regarding the application? Or the applicant? Thank you. Any discussion or to hear a motion?
I move we approve with the recommendations from staff.
Second.
I've got a first and a second, if you'll call a roll, please.
Greg Easton.
Yes.
David Hunt.
Yes.
Jim Lamb.
Yes.
Ken Demetrio.
Yes.
Jack Young.
Yes.
James Reed.
Yes.
Don Conway.
Yes.
Paul Kaiser.
Yes. Been approved, thank you. Okay, maybe other letters we're not reading to?
No.
Nobody else to speak? Okay, so no letters, no open discussion. Now, pass, we're going to have to entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move.
We have a second? Got a first and a second for adjournment, meeting is now closed. Thank you.